Human Services. And it is. This was an. It's an. The. What. I go. Uh. The. He could go. I go. To. The. The. Band. They. Miss. But. Yeah. Come. I'll. Catch. That. But. Uh. Get. Me. Three. I do. So. Now. So. Do. Do. I go. So. Now. That. They. Get. Me. Three. I do. Is. It. Is. This. This. Now. I. 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 So. Get. Me. Three. Come. I. He. It's. And. He. Go. Now. And. I. I. Ha. See. I. Hey. I do. He. Can. I. Did. Well. You. He. Yeah. So. He's. Me. I. Don't. I. And. I don't. So. I. Eh. He. I. Eh. Eh. We. In. And. He. I do. How. Do. We. Da. Eh. He. Co. Da. Eh. He. Da. We. He. Can. I. Did. Well. Start. He. No. Can. I. Uh. Me. Then. He. Had. A. I. Do. Ben. He. I. Oh. He. Yeah. I. Do. Eh. Eh. Go. Come. Eh. To. He. Id. Oh. To. He. Be. Had. Be. The. Need. He. Eh. Co. He. Eh. I. Know. He. She. Co. Do. I. And. He. Do. Eh. He. Can. I. Did. Well. Eh. Eh. I. La. Did. Eh. 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 That. He. And. Da. He. And. I. Eh. I. Do. Eh. He. Eh. I. Did. Eh. So. I. Eh. 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 He. Do. Eh. Eh. He. 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 Eh. Uh. Eh. 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 He. Eh. I. Do. Eh. Uh. Ben. I. Eh. I. Do. Eh. I. Eh. I. He. It's. And. I. Do. Eh. 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 He. Get. The. Eh. Eh. Well.[109.15]
Amendment by Honorable Carlos Slater. To add three other entities with additional information to the committee. I hear a second. Good morning. I do want to just go out here a second to amend the agenda to include OOC, OMB, Justice. Delegate Paul Begay was second. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Honorable Paul Begay, motion to amend the agenda? Any other question?
Chair, I would like to clarify something.
Honorable Vice Chair Slater has a vote.
I would like the Controller to present first, then the Department of Justice, and then the Veterans Program will be available if we have questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Slater. Chair, Honorable Paul Begay, do you concur?
Yes, Chair, I do approve with that amendment.
Committee members, with that, so change the the other comments discussion for the changes. One? Right? Three times. Mister Mo.
Sir. Honorable Paul Begay Jr. Delegate Paul Begay votes green. Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Pernell Halona?
Honorable Green.
Honorable Pernell Halona votes green. Honorable Carl Russell Slater?
Green, Delegate Slater.
Russell Slater votes green. Honorable Shelly Stone, excuse me. Honorable Edison J. Unica?
Green.
Honorable Edison J. Unica votes green. Honorable Chair who do a board favor zero opposed?
What you say? Wait, I'm not farting. I'm not.
Thank you, committee members. Mister Mo, thank you for let the record show. Would a four favor zero opposed, Chair not voting. Bring us to uh, let me back up a little bit. Ms. Finali, with that amendment, now we go to the main motion to adopt the agenda. Am I correct?
You're correct, sir.
What was that? One more time.
Yes, sir, you're correct. That's right.
Okay. Mo, with the amendment, let's do the vote.
Hi, sir.
amended agenda.
Hi, sir.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. Delegate Paul Begay votes green. Honorable Paul Begay Jr. goes green. Honorable Pernell Halona?
Honorable Green.
Honorable Pernell Halona goes green. Honorable Carl Russell Slater?
Green.
Honorable Carl Russell Slater votes green. Honorable Edison J. Unica? Honorable Edison J. Unica?
Green.
Honorable Edison J. Unica votes green. Chair, who do a four in favor zero opposed?
Thank you, committee members. Uh, four in favor of zero opposed and the chair not voting. We have an amended agenda before us. Go to item four, review and adopt the journal. Ms. Finali and Mister Mo.
Chair, I emailed the journal out this morning at seven forty-three this morning.
Committee members?
Motion, Unica.
Thank you.
Second, Delegate Begay.
Thank you. Committee members, we have a motion to adopt the June twenty-ninth amendment. Any discussion on that journal? Let's go to the adopt the June twenty-ninth, twenty-two, uh, journal. Mister Mo.
Yes, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Jr. Delegate Begay votes green. Honorable Paul Begay Jr. goes green. Honorable Pernell Halona? Honorable Pernell Halona? Honorable Carl Russell Slater?
Green.
Honorable Slater votes green. Honorable Edison J. Unica? Honorable Edison J. Unica? Honorable Edison J. Unica votes green. Honorable Pernell Halona? Honorable Pernell Halona? Chair, votes green, favor zero opposed?
Okay, thank you. Uh, record show a three favor zero opposed, the chair not voting. Um, let's go now to item five, receiving report. Page eight. The amended agenda, we will receive a report from the Office of the Controller, uh, Acting Controller, Mister Elizabeth Begay. We will go to OMB. And we will go to Department of Justice. Miss Elizabeth Begay.
Yes, good morning, Mister Chair and members of the HESI Committee. For the record, my name is Elizabeth Begay, Acting Controller. Also connected with me is Jeremy Jimmy. He's the Financial Analyst for the Office of the Controller, who manages the Veterans Trust Fund Investment as part of the overall Navajo Nation Investment Portfolio. I will just start with the background information on how we arrived on the recommended FY twenty-twenty-three budget for the Veterans Trust Fund. Back in May, to be specific, uh, May twentieth, twenty-twenty-two, the Office of the Controller released the, the initial recommended budget for the Veterans Trust Fund, the program at four point eight million. That's back in May twenty-twenty-two. After we released that budget, we were informed that we have to revisit our calculation because of the amendments to the Veterans Trust Fund that was passed per Council Resolution CJA dash zero-two dash eighteen, that was way back in twenty-eighteen, and another amendments to the Veterans Trust Fund, CJY dash forty-six dash twenty-one. And we were informed that the purpose of those amendments is to basically increase the, the money to be put on the Veterans Trust Fund principal so that the fund will grow. So based on that notification, then you have to recalculate the FY twenty-twenty-three recommended budget, uh, um, Mister Jeremy Jimmy, as well as, uh, the Executive Director for the Veterans Trust Fund Administration, as well as DOJ Attorneys, uh, met several times to discuss the impact of those, uh, resolutions that I mentioned. And I was informed, they reviewed one line by line, the two resolutions, and based on their meetings, we determined that we have to recalculate the recommended FY twenty-twenty-three budget for the Veterans Fund Program as well as the Housing Program. So based on that, uh, we issued a memo to the Executive Director, Mister James Swerline, about the revised twenty-twenty-three recommended budget, and that memorandum was dated July seventh, twenty-twenty-two. And I trust all the committee members have a copy of that memorandum. If not, uh, we can, uh, email it to everyone. And on that memorandum, the revised twenty-twenty-three budget for Veterans Program was identified or calculated two million forty-one thousand three hundred seventy dollars. So that's a decrease of approximately two point seven million from the initial budget that we calculated or recommended back in May of twenty-twenty-two. And comparing the FY twenty-twenty-three revised budget to current FY twenty-twenty-two, there was a decrease of two point two million. As I stated earlier, it was, uh, the DOJ Attorneys in Aduba is, uh, connected, uh, as well as Chris Snyder with Jeremy Jimmy and the Executive Director agreement that we have to follow those amendments to the Veterans Trust Fund Budget. And that, uh, if we go back to the previous calculation, then we will be not in compliance with the, the intent of those amendments that were passed by the Council. But of course, it's up to this committee by us with guidance. You want to waive those amendments that was passed back in twenty-eighteen and twenty-twenty-one and recalculate again the revised budget for Veterans Trust Fund Program. Or we have to amend again the Veterans Trust Fund that, uh, is codified under Title XII, basically change the calculation on the recommended budget for the Veterans Trust Fund Program. So, um, that, uh, is my report, but I would like to transfer the floor to Mister Jeremy Jimmy to provide more detailed information on the calculation. If the committee can hear from Mister Jimmy.
Before we turn the floor over to Mister Jimmy, uh, committee members, do you have any questions for Controller, um, Miss Elizabeth Begay?
I have a question, Chair.
Uh, yes, Honorable Vice Chair Carlos Slater, you have the floor.
Thank you. So my question is, from fiscal year twenty-nineteen to twenty-two, did the Office of the Controller and the Office of Management Budget improperly budget the Veterans Trust Fund's fundings?
Begay.
Yes, thank you, Mister Chair and Vice Chair Slater. Yes, you're correct. The Office of the Controller, um, did not review in detail the amendments that, uh, were approved by the Navajo Nation Council and improperly calculated the recommended budget for the Veterans Trust Fund Program in twenty-nineteen, in twenty-twenty, as well as in twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two. It's just for this upcoming twenty-twenty-three. After our office, with assistance of DOJ Attorneys, reviewed in detail, line by line, the amendments to the Veterans Trust Fund that we uncovered that we were improperly recal- calculating the recommended budget for the Veterans Trust Fund. Mister Chair.
Chair, can I ask follow-up? Thank you. So Controller Begay, who is going to be the person who's going to walk us through specifically what the policies are that have changed the calculations and explain that? Because you just said amendments. Is that going to be Mister Jimmy, or is that going to be the Department of Justice?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Slater. Both the Department of Justice and Mister Jeremy Jimmy will explain in detail how they uncovered the miscalculations in the previous budgets, previous years' budgets that were recommended for the Veterans Trust Fund.
Thank you, Miss Begay. Honorable Vice Chair Slater, do you have follow-up?
No, I'm ready to hear from the rest of the presenters. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Now, that, thank you, Miss Begay. Oh, um, Mister Jeremy Jimmy? At the Office of the Controller. Jimmy, you have the teleconference floor.
Thank you, Chair. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, again.
Hi, good morning. Uh, for the record, my name is Jeremy Jimmy. I'm the Acting Investment Supervisor in the Investment Section here at the Office of the Controller. Um, the last Hess meeting we had, we provided a, um, a spreadsheet of how the new interpretation was calculated. I'm not too sure if you guys still have that. It was provided by Department of Justice.
Is that the one that's part of the package?
Yes, sir. I believe it was a three-page packet. Okay, so this is the one I'll be referring to and going down the calculation list. Okay. Um, so I'll be comparing it side by side with the amended codes and the current codes that are in place. Uh, so under Title XII, NNC Section eleven-seventy-one, as amended by CJY dash forty-six dash twenty-one, subsection one, two percent of the set aside was to go to the Veterans Trust Fund. And in section two, subsection two, two percent of the Veterans Trust Fund of the FY twenty-three projected revenue should go to the Veterans Housing Program. So that's where we get on the spreadsheet FY twenty-three projected revenue of two hundred thirteen million. Then we go to item F on the spreadsheet, and so that's where we split up the two percent to the Veterans Housing Program and the other two percent to the Navajo Veterans Trust Fund, and that's based off of, um, section eleven-seventy-one, subsection one and two. Next, we go to subsection eleven-seventy-six A, subsection A, which was amended by CJA dash zero-two dash eighteen, where it says we take seventy-five percent of the total income earned plus the current project, um, project set aside. So we use the FY twenty audit financial statements, and that's how we look at, um, on the worksheet, sections A, B, and C, which is the investment income earned by the Navajo Veterans Trust Fund. So two hundred and thirty-three thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars was generated by, uh, direct investments. One million eight hundred thousand one hundred and thirty-seven was generated by interest income. One million one hundred fourteen thousand six hundred and seventy-six was generated by the dividends that was earned. Given us a total investment income of three million one hundred forty-eight thousand five hundred fifty-seven, based off of the FY twenty audit. So now we have the investment income calculated. Going back to the code eleven-seventy-six A, seventy-five percent of that we need to calculate, plus the earned, um, current projected set aside. Um, according to, um, eleven-seventy-five, subsection A, which reads the fund principal shall consist of all Navajo Nation Council appropriations made pursuant to the tribal appropriation process and procedures, and any contributions made by any parties or entity. Therefore, that two percent that was calculated from the FY twenty-three projected revenue is considered to be principal. So that's already spoken for, from section eleven-seventy-one. Therefore, it's the current projected, um, current income earned, the seventy-five percent, and there's zero projected set aside in eleven-seventy-six, subsection A. So that leads us to, on the worksheet, section D, where it says the interest income, the three million one hundred forty-eight thousand five hundred fifty-seven dollars. That's where we're at now. There's no other funding added to that from the, um, set aside because according to eleven-seventy-five A, that was already given to the Veterans Trust Fund Principal. So next, we go into the code again, eleven-seventy-seven, which is expenses, which reads all expenses directly associated with the administration and management of the fund shall be paid from the trust fund income as approved by the Budget and Finance Committee of the Navajo Nation Council prior to the distribution of income under section eleven-seventy-six. Such expenses shall include investment advisory and management fees, audit costs, and other related expenses, all pursuant to duly approved contracts for such services. Therefore, we subtract out the manager, investment manager fees for the upcoming FY twenty-three, which is, um, that total amount of that, three hundred seventy-one dollars, one hundred eighty-three, uh, and that, um, section H of the worksheet. So we take that out right from the investment income before we start looking at eleven-seventy-six. So now we are left with a net investment income after fees of two million seven hundred seventy-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars, and that's that item I on the worksheet. Next, we go back to eleven-seventy-six, subsection A, where it still reads excluding two percent, which shall be for the exclusive use for the Veterans Housing Program in accordance with two NNC Section eleven-seventy-one, subsection A, and then, and Navajo Nation Resolution CSS dash fifty-six dash seventeen. Because of that, we subtr- take two percent out of the net investment income. And so that amount comes to that fifty-five thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars, and that's that item J on the worksheet. We take two percent from the net investment income after management fees, and that's that fifty-five thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars. So once we take that out, the remaining that is left is an item K of the worksheet, which is that two million seven hundred twenty-one dollars and eight hundred twenty-seven. Next, we go back to the eleven-seventy-six A, the top part of it, where it says we take seventy-five percent uh, for the programs and services to benefit veterans. So that's where we take, which is an item M of the worksheet. So we take seventy-five percent of item K, which is the amount left after management fees and after the two percent exclusion, which is that two million seven hundred twenty-one dol- twenty-two, two million seven hundred twenty-one, eight hundred twenty-seven dollars. We take that seventy-five percent of that, and that's for the Veterans Program, two million forty-one dollars and three hundred and seventy dollars. So after all the calculations, we add them up from the different areas. So the Veterans Program is just item M on the worksheet, which is the two million forty-one thousand three hundred and seventy dollars. The Veterans Housing Program gets the two percent from the projected set aside from item G, from item F, I'm sorry, sorry about that, item F, and the two percent from the investment income, giving you a total of four million three hundred thirty-one thousand six hundred and seven dollars. The amount to be reinvested, it comes from that, um, item G on the worksheet, which is that two percent, um, of the projected revenue that was put back into the principal, plus item L on the worksheet, and that gives you four million nine hundred fifty-six thousand five hundred seventeen dollars. To explain item L on the worksheet, we go back to eleven-seventy-six, subsection A of the code, where it talks about reinvestment, the excess of the fund income over expenditure shall be reinvested in the fund to cover the rate of inflation and to provide for reasonable fund growth. And, um, members of Hess, this is how we get the new calculations for the veterans for FY twenty-three.
Just to conclude, Mister Chair, and members of the committee, as of the end of, uh, March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, the last quarter, we're still compiling, um, these past quarters, uh, data. The Veterans Trust Fund has a fund balance of two hundred forty-eight million eight hundred forty-one thousand nine hundred fifty-eight dollars. And as, uh, we stated earlier, And as, uh, we stated earlier, the intent of the amendments to the Veterans Trust Fund is for the principal to grow. But of course, it's up to this committee as well as to the Navajo Nation Council to amend the Veterans Trust Fund if, uh, the projected twenty twenty-three budget is not sufficient to fund the program. And, uh, that concludes our presentation. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Gay and Mr. Jimmy. Many members, if you have any questions.
Chair. Thank you very much. Um, so I appreciate walking through how we arrived at the correct calculations for fiscal year twenty-three and getting us into compliance for the, um, well, for this fiscal year and complying with the laws of the Navajo Nation. It's very unsettling to hear that the Office of the Controller and the Department of Justice is just uncovering this now and that they've been improperly budgeting, um, since before your tenure, um, Ms. Gay. But my question is, can you walk through what, what is the differentiation? Like, how can you explain to the committee and to our veterans the difference in how the income was calculated and budgeted before? And now to arrive at this difference? Because it's one thing to just say, okay, well, here is how the numbers should be calculated. But, uh, I think we're all still struggling to understand, is there just more money that is being captured and reinvested? So, okay, there's X amount of investment income, and it's going into reinvestment as opposed to being made available in each fiscal year? Is it something related to carryover? I, I just, I, I need more clarity there, and I don't know if the Department of Justice might be able to help out more than the Controller's Office. But whoever can answer that best, uh, please do so.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Slater. So the intent, uh, of that amendment again is to basically identify more money to be captured as a reinvestment to the fund balance, to the Veterans Trust Fund principal. That changed the whole calculation. But, uh, if I could defer to, um, Adwa and, uh, clarify why the amendments were done back in twenty twenty-one.
Adwa. Chair, if I may, this is Adwa.
Adwa, thank you for joining the call. Thank you, uh, Ms. Gay for taking the reference to DOJ. Adwa, do you, did you understand Honorable Vice Chair Slater's question?
Chair, I believe I did.
Okay, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Chair and committee members. Um, first, I, I would like to point out to the committee that, uh, I specifically, within DOJ, work in the Tax and Finance Unit. And so my role is to work with OOC's Investment Section. And so I can speak to OOC Investment Section's view of the effect of the amendments. Um, I, I leave it to Mr. Chris Schneider, my colleague, um, at DOJ, who works with the NNVA to speak to the effect on the NNVA's budget itself and sort of their administrative, um, duties. But in terms of the, in terms of OOC's view of what has happened, Vice Chair Slater, in essence, the twenty eighteen amendment was made that gave directives on how the money was to be, um, calculated. The, the income was to be looked at each year and calculated and then allocated. And then the twenty twenty-one amendments were made that basically gave duplicative directives. And so because the twenty twenty-one amendments essentially sit on top of the twenty eighteen amendments, they both are in effect. So what you end up with is with the, with the pot of money, whichever fiscal year we're talking about, instead of one directive about how the money is to be, um, split up and then allocated, you, we now have two sets of directives, but they're both codified at twelve NNC, um, Section eleven seventy-one and following. So we have to follow both. And so that's where OOC's Investment Section then needed to do a revised, um, budget schedule in order to take into account the directives from the twenty eighteen amendment and the directives from the twenty twenty-one amendment. And that is why, as an end result, there is less money available as compared to previous years. I cannot speak to what caused, you know, the, the lack of, um, recalculation after the twenty twenty-one amendments that should have corrected this issue in, in, in years prior. But going back to, say, twenty nineteen or even twenty twenty, at that point, the twenty twenty-one amendments were not in effect. So for those years, we still just had one directive and the calculations just worked off of those. After the twenty twenty-one amendment, that's when we enter into the situation where we have now two directives layered on top of each other. And as has been explained by Madam Acting Controller, you know, OOC's Investment Section has done the recalculation to take, um, all of that into account, and we arrive at the numbers, um, that we have today. I will stop there and, um, am prepared to continue on the DOJ presentation or answer any other questions at, as the committee wishes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adwa. Honorable Vice Chair Slater, do you have a follow-up?
Thank you, Chair. Um, all right, I have a better understanding now. In terms of the duplicate directives or the overlaying directives, can you lay those out specifically right now? Is it, okay, we have to set aside X amount, and then on top of that, we're setting aside another X amount to be reinvested? Can you talk through what those numbers are specifically or percentages?
Chair, if I may? Thank you. So Vice Chair Slater, again, I would refer you to the document that was mentioned by Mr. Jeremy Jimmy that was prepared for, um, HES's twenty-third June meeting. If necessary, I can quickly email that, um, out again to the, um, committee staff, if that needs to be sent to the committee members again. But if you have it, I am looking at, uh, Section Four of that document, um, which is on page two of the document. Please let me know if, uh, you would like me to email the document back out or if I'm free to continue.
I, I think it was sent out. There's one document that I hadn't seen before that I'm now reviewing. Before, there was a spreadsheet or a schedule, but it didn't outline, this is attributed to X resolution, this is attributed to X resolution. But there seems to be a narrative now.
What time was this sent out there? Andy, do you have it? Ms. Benali, do you have that? Uh, Ms. Adwa, could you resend that?
Yes, Chair, I. I'll forward it. Oh, excuse me.
No, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll forward it, Mr. Chair, soon as I receive it. Again, I was looking through my emails. Thank you.
If the committee would permit me just one moment, I will send it to Ms. Benali here, and then, uh, I will be ready to talk through it. Just one moment. Okay, Chair, committee members, I have just sent it to Ms. Benali. So please let me know, um, when you are ready for me to begin.
Ms. Benali, have you received it and an email, and then have you sent it out?
Mr. Chair and members of the, um, HES committee, I have not received it. Uh, I did send, um, Ms. Danso a test email because, uh, her address is nnjoj.org. It's not navajo-nsn.gov. So sometimes it doesn't come across because they have a different email address. That's a dot org. They consider it a third party. So I did send her one. It should allow it to, you know, come through now.
Chair, if I may, this is Adwa.
All right, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Benali, I, I did respond to the test, um, email. So that should, uh, hopefully release the initial email that I sent. But this is also a document that was presented at the June twenty-third, twenty twenty-two HES meeting. So, um, if you are able to locate the document that way, if that's faster, um, for, for, for the committee, then, uh, please, it's that same document from the June twenty-third meeting. So if you could please, uh, forward that to the committee members. Thank you.
Ms. Adwa, at the time, uh, that document was basically within the aspect of attorney-client privilege. As I recall, um, June twenty-third.
Chair, the document itself was not under attorney-client privilege, uh, protection. It was the discussion that was held during, um, excuse me, as part of executive, executive, uh, session. However, the document itself is not, um, does not need to be, uh, kept as an attorney-client privileged document. And so I, I am able to discuss, um, the general details of it here on the main call. Depending on where the questions go as the conversation continues, we may need to go into executive session. Um, if, if that becomes necessary, I will, uh, alert the committee, and then the committee can decide at that, at that point, what, what it would like to do.
Uh, thank you. Um, I'm going to make a call on this committee members. Let's go ahead and proceed with, uh, Ms. Adwa's, uh, report respective of the document that was previously shared on June twenty-third. I think perhaps, uh, going over this document will remind the committee what, uh, the timelines that occurred to the point where we're in this particular situation. Yes, the, before I proceed, um, I'd like, uh, Ms. Gay and Mr. Jimmy. The main thing is, uh, as far as the investment and correcting course, bottom line question would be, has there been a loss of funds? Let you, um, gather your information while we, uh, listen to Ms. Adwa, um, from the Department of Justice. Adwa, do you have the conference floor?
Thank you very much, Chair. Committee members, as I mentioned, I am looking at the document that was presented to HES at the June twenty-third meeting, um, to walk through the amendments and where we stand today in, in essence. So, um, I'm going to go over the first couple of sections very quickly. Um, the first one is just, uh, the first section is, is background in terms of the establishment of the Veterans Trust Fund, and that happened in nineteen ninety-eight. And then in twenty eighteen, there was the first resolution that Mr. Jimmy referenced, CJA oh, dash zero-two dash one-eight, where the methodology for calculating expenditures from the trust fund of, excuse me, expenditures of the trust fund income was changed. And so, um, in two, the two thousand and eighteen amendment required that once the Office of the Controller Investment Section, um, calculated what the total income earned was, that seventy-five percent of that total income earned plus a projected set aside was to be used as supplemental funding for programs and services to benefit veterans. was to be used as supplemental funding for programs and services to benefit veterans. There was also, the second part of that section mandated that 2% of the total income earned was to be used exclusively for the Veterans Housing Program. So so far in 2018, those are the directives we have. Figure out the total income earned, take 2% of that and set it aside specifically for Veterans Housing Program. And then take 75% of the remaining total plus a projected set aside that is supposed to be used as supplemental funding. Then the income earned from the trust fund from the previous audited fiscal year plus the projected set aside for the current fiscal year where what OOC's Investment Section was to use to figure out the actual allowable expenditure for the fiscal year, the current fiscal year in question, right? Next, 2018 amendment mandated that if there was any excess of fund income over expenditures, that that was to be reinvested in the trust fund. Finally, the 2018 amendment talked about specifically 5% of the trust fund total, which was the total income earned plus the projected set aside, was to be used for administrative purposes. Now here, I'd like to pause and point out to the committee that the issue with this 5% cap on administrative fees is that the funds are being invested by an investment manager that with which, with whom, excuse me, the Navajo Nation has a relationship. The method of calculating the investment manager fees is based on the income earned from the investments. So we have a situation where, you know, thankfully, when the investments do well in terms of earning income, we end up owing the, or needing to pay the investment manager for their work, but that fee comes out to more than 5%. And so that already in this 2018 amendment causes some problem. So I wanted to point that out to the committee as I continue. Now scrolling down in that document that was prepared for the committee, looking at the 2021 amendment. In the interim between 2018 and 2021, there was a resolution, CJY 5518, that established the Navajo Veterans Housing Program. And so the 2021 amendment took up the Veterans Advisory Council's recommendation that this section of the code be amended to officially incorporate the creation of that housing program. So as part of that, the 2021 amendment then amended Section 1171 of Title 12 by saying that the projected set aside, which is supposed to be 4% of all projected Navajo Nation revenues, half of that 4% is to be transferred to the trust fund. And the remaining half of the 4% is to be allocated to the housing program. So as I pointed out earlier in the 2018 amendment, there is that 2% that was supposed to be used for the Veterans Housing Program. And now on top of it, we have, in this 2021 amendment, half of the 4% that is allocated to the housing program. So that's one example of how you have dual directives. And so at the end of the day, it's not that there has been a loss in investment or even principal of the fund itself, but that more of it is being directed to do certain things. And that's why the remaining balance is so much lower than it previously was. Because as an example here, you have two directives to allocate money towards the housing program. So now looking at Section 4 of this document, if you put the 2018 and 2021 amendments together, this is where myself, Mr. Jimmy of OOC's Investment Section, Directors Rowline, and Chris Schneider of DOJ who works with an NVA, we sat down and as Madam Acting Controller pointed out, went line by line to understand the effect of what is supposed to happen. And that's how Mr. Jimmy came up with the calculation that is on page three of this document that shows the drop in available funds once all of these directives have been complied with. So I won't walk through them under this Section 4 because Mr. Jimmy already has. But the overall effect, as I mentioned earlier, is that we have directive from 2018 and then a directive from 2021. And they're both in effect. So OOC's Investment Section essentially has to follow both. And that is why there has been such a drop in the available balance for this projected fiscal year. And that's why OOC issued a revised budget schedule. To quickly touch on Sections 5 and 6 of this document, the proposed solution, as Madam Acting Controller pointed out, this is an issue for leadership to decide. And so if leadership decides that the amount currently available based on the revised budget schedule is not in line with what they were imagining would be available, then there could be supplement, supplemental funds from another source, you know, spoken for in order to arrive at the total that leadership wishes an NVA to have. And then looking ahead, the long-term proposal for a fix is that there should be a work session to make amendments that are holistic and go through the entire section of this portion of the code. So that whatever the intent is, it is clarified and it is, you know, made clear, yeah, so that going forward, OOC's Investment Section knows how to calculate and arrive at figures that reflect the intent of leadership in terms of how money is to be allocated and for what purpose it's to be used. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Adjuwa. Committee members. Do we have any questions for Ms. Adjuwa?
Yes, may I, Chair, add something? This is Elizabeth.
Yes, Ms. McGee, you have the teleconference floor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Hess Committee. I just want to emphasize that the 2.7 million decreased from the initial recommended budget of 4.8 million and revised recommended budget for 2023 of 2.0 million. The difference of 2.7, it will be reinvested to the fund principal balance of the Veterans Trust Fund as required by the Veterans Trust Fund amendments. But since it's too late to do another amendments because we're now in the 2023 budget hearing, what I could suggest, if our legal advisors will agree, is to waive that provision of Title 12 just for the Veterans Trust Fund in order for us to again issue another recalculation going back to the initial one of 4.8 million. But that's just my suggestion. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. McGee. Definitely, we've compounded the problems. I guess the question is, the main concern, is there a loss of funds? What I'm seeing is more funds are funneled to the housing program rather than the actual running of the program. That's you correct. Adjuwa and
Chair, this is Adra, if I may.
Yes.
Thank you. So at least from a legal perspective, Chair, you are correct in that there is more money being funneled, as you put it, towards the housing program. And also, as Madam Acting Controller pointed out, that's being reinvested towards the principal. So there's not an overall loss as in a net negative result for the fund in terms of its investment or anything like that. It's just that, as you pointed out, Chair, the money is funneled into different places. And so to answer your question, there's not a net loss of funds. It's just being directed into different pots, as it were. Madam Acting Controller, Mr. Jimmy, please correct me if I have misspoken. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chair and members of the committee, I agree that the housing program did receive additional money. And it's based on the recalculation that we did. But the program, the operating budget, again, decreased a whole lot. And that money was funneled to the principal fund balance of the Veterans Trust Fund that will be invested. But overall, as Adjuwa stated, there was no decrease. Thank you.
Thank you. I just basically brought up that perspective to get clear to all the folks on the call that there is no actual loss. And I would, basically, this look at CJY 4621. Initially was put on into process by a resolution of the Navajo Nation Veterans Advisory Council. That Navajo Nation Veterans Advisory Council resolution is 020-20. And from there, then, Honorable Chairman Smith Jr. sponsored the legislation, which this committee adopted. Then it went to, oh, excuse me. It went from the Resource and Development Committee to the Hess Committee, then to the Law and Order Committee, and then finally to the BSK Committee. It was that advice of the Veterans Advisory Council to make the changes, putting more money into the housing program. Committee members. You have any questions?
Chair, she did not chat a bit from Office of Legislative Council.
Oh, to change.
Yes, good morning. I just lay in the dish kitchen, so. I wanted to ask the question about the about the inconsistencies that these resolutions that was created from the 2018 resolution into 2021 resolution. I just wanted to know if the Department of Justice has any recommendations to fix these inconsistencies? Wanted to ask that question, Chair.
Thank you for giving us guidance with your question. Ms. Adjuwa?
Thank you, Chair. Committee members, Mr. Bada, as I pointed out, pointed, excuse me, out earlier, my role specifically is to work with OOC's Investment Section. So OOC's Investment Section doesn't necessarily have guidance on how to fix in terms of what the language should say. The most I can say is that there should be some revision in order to arrive at the intent of leadership, whatever that intent is. And so I would say that what needs to happen is an overhaul of this section so that whatever new amendments are proposed are read holistically. And, you know, staff can ensure that it is not duplicative and creating the same problem again before it's presented to leadership to decide whether to approve it or not. In terms of specific proposed language, I would leave that to Mr. Swireline and Mr. Schneider, my colleague at DOJ, to speak to since they work more directly with an NVA. The final thing I will add is that from OOC Investment Section's perspective, the one area that I would bring up, you know, I would flag is the language that talks about 5% being used to pay administrative fees. And the fact that that's just not consistent with the ways in which the Navajo Nation's relationship with its investment managers works. And also just in terms of industry standards of how how investment manager fees are calculated. And so I would ask respectfully that whoever is working on these amendments consult with OOC's Investment Section to ensure that the language is consistent with what is in our contract agreements with these investment managers and also in terms of industry standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider, are you on the call?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Swireline and I have been working on an amendment, working on language for a week and a half on this to provide a long-term solution. We've reached out to the Office of the Controller and they have given us some guidance. We have drafted some language, but it's not ready for, it's not ready for the committee yet, but we are working on it.
Mr. Snyder, that's a pretty vague response.
I'm having trouble hearing you, Mr. Chairman.
Let me back, back up. Did you advise the Navajo Nation's Veteran Advisory Council? when they adopted the resolution? That M F being C J Y forty-six twenty-one? Did you craft those original amendments?
No, Mr. Chairman, I didn't draft that language.
Okay. Committee members, uh, the way I see it, there is no immediate correction legislatively. Even if we amended the language, the results wouldn't be seen for a whole year. What Miss, uh, Bigay, Acting Controller, has in her recommendation is to seek funds. Help it within, whether it be in U U S B or, let's say, in other, uh, divisions where general funds would be available. We would ask the council to transfer some funds in the amount to where Veterans Program behold, somewhere in the amount of twenty-two million dollars. That was, uh, two, excuse me, two-point-seven million dollars. Committee members. That seems to be, um, the, the way forward. We would have to ask guidance, um, of legislative council, so as Department of Justice, as well as O O C, which funds could be kept to make that particular transfer. As we move into our budget deliberations, starting this later this month, we would need to, I guess, uh, the thought is to have a follow-up meeting. That's the Wednesday after the council session. That we, we would basically chart a clear direction. Committee members, your thoughts as we go forward? Otherwise, uh, I don't want to be the one to say we can't do anything. As legislators, appropriators, O C makers, we can do something about it.
Chair.
Honorable, uh, Vice Chair Slater, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, can O O C and DOJ walk through the practical effect of what may take place if there is no, um, alternative source of funding or waivers or amendments? But if this is passed as is in the fiscal year twenty-three budget? So, talk about the investment in housing for this year as opposed to last year and just the differentiation in the, in the funding, say, from FY twenty-two levels to FY twenty-three. It sounds like, you know, there's going to be a lot more money in the housing program. And I appreciate the written documentation that was provided, but I think there needs to be a more layman's version developed that our veterans can actually comprehend whether they've gone to college or not gone to college, or are very well-versed in English or not. And we got to meet them where they are. So, I, I just think that that's something that's lacking right now in what's been developed. And perhaps the President's Office could use some of their Navajo language experts to work on that. And if they can't do that, then I would ask the Speaker's Office. So, if you have any staff assistants on the line, if they could start working on that item. As Chair So said, this was passed with the support of the Navajo Nation Veterans Advisory Council. And I think that's why it passed eighteen-zero by the council. Chair, I, um, did not vote for it at that time. And neither did Speaker Damon, it looks like. But I, I just really want to make that ask because I've been reading this document over and over again, and I feel like I'm finally starting to get the gist of it. But the schedule with all the calculations, I think, needs to be better laid out in writing. Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Vice Chair Slater.
Yeah, Miss, Mr. Chair, um, may.
Uh, yes, uh, Ms. Bigay, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the Hesse Committee, uh, there is, uh, twenty-seven million available that we identified that, uh, this committee can consider to fund, uh, the Veterans Trust, uh, operating budget. That twenty-seven million is the excess permanent fund income. Beginning of the, uh, fiscal year, um, twenty-twenty-three, actually, we identified sixty-seven million, but forty million went to the general fund as the, um, twenty-twenty-three available money for the Navajo Nation Government Operating Budget. And twenty-seven million is still available. That's something that this committee can, can, can look to, to fund these, uh, two-point-seven million for the Veterans Trust Fund Program. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Bigay. Committee members, your thoughts?
Wait, Chair, I, I didn't get my question answered. What I was asking for is, can the Controller or the Department of Justice explain what the practical effect is going to be? Like, we're investing X amount into the housing program now whereas we were investing a smaller amount in years prior? Or there's going to be less that's available for X types of assistance? But it's being used in some other fashion or is being reinvested into the fund?
Ms. Adwa, Ms. Bigay.
Yes, um.
Oh, excuse me, please go ahead. No, 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 I was going to defer to you, so please go ahead.
Yes, um, um, Mr. Chair, members of the committee and Vice Chair Slater, we have to look at the pattern of expenditures on the housing program. If, uh, if there, there's a lot of carryover money on the housing program, then it means that, uh, they're not actually spending what's being appropriated to them, year after year, then, uh, um, DOJ can revisit again the calculation on how we allocate to the housing program. But that's my suggestion. Now, go ahead, Adwa.
Thank you, Madam Acting Controller. Uh, Chair Committee, what I was going to say was that, um, at least from the calculations and discussions that I've been party to over the last few weeks, um, Vice Chair Slater is correct in that there is more money that is going to, specifically to the housing program. And that therefore means there is less money that is available for other types of assistance. I am not privy to more details about N N V A's budget in terms of how, um, the money that's made available to them is, is divided for the different, um, remaining types of assistance. But, um, at sort of a higher level, um, overview, yes, there is more money that is going specifically, that is being earmarked specifically for Veterans Housing Program. And at this moment, based on this re-calculated, um, budget schedule, more money that is being reinvested as principal, which all results in less money being available for other types of assistance. Thank you.
Chair, this is Jeremy Jimmy.
Yes, uh, Mr. Jimmy.
Thank you, Chair. Um, if you go to page three of three of that document that was, uh, referenced to with that new interpretations, um, scheduled worksheet. At the bottom, we have it in the box where it breaks down the three pots of money that the funds could be directed to. The Veterans Program, the Veterans Home, and the amount to be reinvested. On the left side, we got the new interpretation. And on the right side was the old methodology that was used. And those are the differences. If we look at the bottom, eleven million, three-hundred-twenty-nine-thousand-four-hundred-ninety-four was a total amount from projected revenue, investment income, available for the veterans. And it was split up among those three pots. So if we look at the difference between the new interpretation and the old methodology, we see that the Veterans Program is less three million. The Veterans Home is more by fifty-five thousand, five-hundred-forty-seven dollars. And the amount to be reinvested goes up by three million, one-hundred-thousand-three-hundred-sixty-two dollars. The overall funding to the Veterans Program, both from projected revenue and investment income, is unchanged. So therefore, uh, back to the, uh, previous question, there is no loss to the overall Veterans Program. It's just being directed differently, uh, less to the program, more to the homes, and more to the reinvestment, to the principal. Thank you.
Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Jimmy. We're just taking it from one pocket and putting it into another pocket. But we can't translate. We. Pocket. Honorable Vice Chair Slater.
Thank you. Okay. It's not that substantial of an increase into the Veterans Housing Program, as Mr. Jimmy just said. So it's only fifty-five thousand. And I think that, um, you know, we need to distribute this out to the agency veterans organizations as well as to our individual chapter veterans organizations and hone in on that box that's on page three. That's going to be the most helpful portion, colleagues, to explain what's going on. So, you see, the vast majority of the funding difference between, say, the previous erroneous calculation and the new correct calculation is that there's going to be three-point-one million dollars reinvested into the fund as opposed to being made available for the Veterans Program or the Housing Program. And Chair, my recommendation to the committee would be that we use that figure, the three million, one-hundred-thousand-three-hundred-sixty-two dollars as the target for, um, recapture or using some of the U U F B. And we could do a one-time allocation to make the program whole in the fiscal year twenty-three budget. And then we'll work on a fix for next year's budget and make sure we don't have these duplicate directives, as, um, Adwa said. So, that's, that's what I think would be the easiest thing to do. We should follow the law as, or, you know, as it's been passed. And there's a way to make the programs whole. But before we do that, I think it'd be good to get a resolution from Veterans Advisory Council on what they would like to do. They may have a specific breakdown on how they would like that three-point-one million to be divided between the housing and the Veterans Program. Secondary. I'm still very concerned on behalf of the Chinley Agency veterans about carryover funding because the way that funds are presently distributed, our, our veterans are directly disadvantaged. And that's something that we need to address at some point because the smaller chapters that receive the fifty-fifty formula, in essence, cannot expend that funding for assistance. And so it ends up yielding massive carryover balances that could be used for veterans in Chinley Agency that are not able to access funding because all of the allocation for the agency is exhausted before they have an opportunity to receive funding. And in essence, this money just keeps rolling over and over and over again. Luckily, the Investment Section doesn't pull that funding out from the Veterans Trust Fund until it is expended. So it does continue to accumulate interest and benefit the fund overall. But I, I just, I need to register that on behalf of veterans within the agency, within my district. And it's something that I think the committee really has to look at as a matter of justice and equity. You know, there is a disadvantage when the fifty-fifty formula is a pri- uh, uh, provided in some instances because you have these massive carryovers that hurt veterans who have the need within Central Agency and are not able to access the assistance that they're duly entitled to. So, thank you. And I, I have no further questions at this time. Thank you. I'll, I'll motion to accept the report if we don't have a, a motion. I, I don't think we do.
No, not yet. Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Slater. Before I accept the motion. Uh, before I accept the motion, I guess, one of the highlights from the analysis is and Adwa and Mr. Snyder. One of the highlights from this is the nation should have been using veterans' numbers rather than the fifty-fifty formula. Is that the particular thought, uh, what we'll use going forward? Mr. Snyder, Ms., uh, Adwa and Ms. Bigay.
Chair, this is Adwa. Um, the question about the formulas to be used, um, that does not come under the purview of, um, it O O C's Investment Section. So that's not something I have worked on. So I, I defer to Mr. Snyder, um, on that question. Thank you.
Chair, this is Chris Schneider. Yes, that's what the Department of Justice has determined to be the right calculation, that the fifty-fifty split is from the, the distribu- distribution should be made pursuant to, uh, a head count, basically, of veterans. It's not, it's not going through fifty-fifty because it's not a, an allocation to the chapters. It's going to chapters to be divvied up between qualified individual Navajo veterans. So, and we have discussed that with Lex Council and we have spoken with, uh, the Office of the Controller and as well as the Assistant Attorney General for the Tax and Finance Unit here at DOJ. And that's, they all seem to agree that that's the correct interpretation.
And on the twenty-third, I had asked for a legal opinion?
I, there was a, a memo that went out on Friday. I thought that it'd gone to all members of NABI. I can send that to you.
Okay. Uh, we do have it.
Okay.
Committee members, uh, we, um, since I've gotten that answer, then. since I've gotten that answer, then, uh, committee members, I'll recognize the motion by Honorable Vice Chair Slater to accept the report. And then a second by Honorable Paul Begay. Any further questions? And, uh, uh, staff members, let's get the, uh, the new interpretation document to the chapter veterans organizations, as well as the agent veterans council, as well as the overview that was presented by DOJ to Hess on the twenty-third of June. That helps in the new interpretation. Committee members, uh, necessary we, uh, veterans organization for a work session, if necessary, uh, will be determined by the agent veterans organization. Committee members. Any other thoughts? Honorable Slater, Honorable Begay. In accepting the report items that I outlined, is that, uh, okay with you?
That was to have a, a work session, Chair? Is that right?
If necessary.
Okay. Yeah. I think a work session or, yeah, that, that's good. We'll continue to have this conversation, and it's going to come back to us during the budget process. And, you know, we'll communicate with the Veterans Advisory Council. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. If there's no other comment, questions, Mr. Moos to accept the report.
Yes, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Jr.
Governor Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. goes green. Honorable Pernell Halona, Honorable Pernell Halona goes green. Honorable Russell Slater.
Green.
Honorable Russell Slater goes green. Honorable Edison J. Winika, Honorable Edison J. Winika goes green. Chair, a vote of four in favor, zero opposed?
Okay. Thank you, committee members. Appreciate the attention. And to Mr. Gay, Mr. Jimmy, Ms. Adjoa, Mr. Snyder, and all the folks that, um, called in respective of the matter on the report. Appreciate your attendance. And committee is charting a course forward on how to best correct. A vote of four in favor, zero opposed, the chair not voting to accept the report. Going to old business or being none? A vote to new business, uh, A. If, uh, enter the finale?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Um, yes, Mr. Chair, on the agenda you have seven A, uh, seven is new business, and A is legislation number zero-one, zero-four dash twenty-two. And the legislation is the proposed Navajo Nation Council Resolution, twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council, fourth year, introduced by Council Delegate Otto Soe as a prime sponsor. Tracking number is zero-one, zero-four dash twenty-two, an act relating to the Resources and Development, Health, Education, and Human Services Budget and Finance and Navajo committees, and to the Navajo Nation Council allocating twenty-five million from the CSN Fund to the Tuba City Regional Healthcare Corporation for its long-term care, cancer, and rehabilitation facility, approving the related expenditure plan pursuant to twelve NNC sections, twenty-five zero-one through twenty-five zero-eight. The legis- the, uh, the legislation goes, moves on to the Budget and Finance Committee after the Health, Education, and Human Services Committee has considered it. And the, there is exhibits A attached to the legislation, as well as exhibit B, exhibit C, and exhibit D. And the, there is a committee report from the Resources and Development Committee. And they had it under consideration and took action on June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two, and recommends that do pass with no amendments. Okay, and the, the vote was five-zero-one. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Committee members, how do you wish to proceed with this legislation? Hey, Mr. Taylor.
Honorable Paul Begay.
Honorable Otto Soe, are you on the call?
I'm on the call, Chairman.
Okay, we met the requirements. I'll recognize the motion by Honorable Paul Begay. Will I hear a second? Second.
Delegate Slater's second.
Honorable Edison Winika, Beat it till the punch, Vice Chair Slater.
Fast hands, Winika.
His right hand's faster than in this case. Uh, I guess, let the record show that we have Honorable Pernell Halona and Honorable Edison Winika in the BNF conference room with us. Um, any questions, questions? We follow this particular idea, the ideal. And certainly support this endeavor. There's no questions, uh. Let me, let me just, um, expect, uh, Vice Chair Otto Soe to, um, present legislation to the committee. Mr. Honorable Otto Soe, you have the floor. Star six.
Mr. Chair, Delegate Otto Soe's line is not muted. He does have a clear line.
Yeah, there's the, the thing that we're, we're taxing him because he's over an LOC meeting right now, too. Uh, let me bypass him. We know that uh, the Board Chair, Christopher Curly, is on the call, and CEO, Ms. Lynette Bonar.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, for the record, you do have cosponsors for this legislation. They are Council Delegates Daniel Eso, Edison J. Winika, Paul Begay, Pernell Halona, and Seth Damon. Mr. Chair.
Okay. We do have sponsors on, on the call. Denana, Christopher Curly have the teleconference floor. Um, the US Congress won eight million dollar appropriation. For the actions of the, of the, of the resolution. Honorable Council Delegate Soe. I was in Navajo. Council Delegate is community. Paul Begay. Thomas Walker. That. Uh, yeah. It's a good one. I know. Sadist, sadist. as a six thirty-eight qualified organization to be able to get a long-term care in this. Hopefully this will set a precedent across all agencies to be able to start building so we can bring our elders home, to be closer to home, and to bring their relatives. Think that will, again, provide stability, even longevity in their care. Also, in, um, lengthening, lengthening their life. I'm sorry. I see, yeah, uh, Board of Directors of TBC regional have, um, supported this idea along with our chapter officials that we, our chapters that we represent. Um, and also our Hope Tribe, San Watan Pai tribe also endorsed and supported this idea of also having a long-term care in our midst. What, eh, yeah, uh, oh, yeah. Since the, uh, we do also have our CEO on the call. So, thank you very much, uh, honorable members of our Health, Education, and Human Services. Thank you. I think that's, uh, uh, yeah. I am the CEO of the C E O. I am the CEO of the C E O. I am the CEO of the C E O. I am the CEO of the C E O. I am the CEO of the C E O. I do also have our C E O on the call. So, thank you very much, honorable members of our Health Education Human Service. Thank you.
Chairman. This is Otto So. I was on mute.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, you have the floor.
Yes, I have. But all, uh, I don't, uh, Chris could hear something now. This, uh, legislation pertaining to the, uh, uh, four dash twenty two, pertaining to the, um, to the long term care, cancer care program expansion and rehabilitation facility. Twenty five million dollars, it is from the, uh, C H F N fund. I go, go, eh, eh, yeah, uh, did, um, uh, eh, yeah, go, not, 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 the, the need, so. I go, I have a, not, eh, this thing. The City of City Healthcare Corporation has did, did, do, do, due diligence. They have, uh, secured eight million dollars in congressional appropriation for this facility. They have, uh, uh, they're carrying a loan of an amount of twenty five million to match this, uh, through U S, uh, U S D A grant. I go, eh, I, the, the, so, I think, so, should I, eh, I, I, I go, it's estimated to be about fifty six million to sixty million dollar facility. I go, eh, the, two, the, the, eh, I, the, the, eh, the, eh, the, eh, the, eh, the other is the, uh, oncology center, which is gonna house. Eh, the, eh, it's gonna house the rehabilitation efforts of, of, um, of illnesses, net, uh, quite, uh, rehabilitation efforts. It's gonna be a multi unit facility that's gonna be built in the western portion of the Navajo Nation, which our, um, six thirty eight facility will be utilizing. I believe it is estimated in sales tax that it will generate an amount of five million dollars a year.